I have seven o'clock. We will call the regular common council meeting of the city of Stevens Point to order. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Keemer.
Here.
Zarazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebon.
Here.
Leek.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Fishler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Everyone is present. Looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six in person, five remote, and we will continue. Please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, unalienable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We do a few things on the agenda, but I will keep my remarks short. We want to thank Roger Skrzczkuski, who was our fabricator in the Streets Department, who is going to be retiring, and we wish him well. And, really, that's about it. We have public meetings that we are continuing on. Fourth District Meeting is coming up on August 25th. And, yeah, I think that's about it. Anybody who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item or an agenda item, I need you to have you sign up with Sandy or let me know via Zoom that you wish to take three minutes to speak on a non-agenda item. And then I'll read this. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open by the mayor. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on a non-agenda item for up to three minutes? Okay, we have one person here. Anyone on Zoom? Alder Jennings, anything to share? President Johnson? Anyone shaking your head? Alder Slawinski? Alder Fishler is shaking his head as well. Okay. And, at this time then, persons who wish to address the mayor and council for up to three minutes regarding a non-agenda item may do so. Please approach the lectern, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is David Iden. I reside at 1008 Matilda Street here in town. A couple of things I wanted to touch on. I think I spoke to you, Mayor, at the Riverfront Rendezvous and mentioned repairs needed on the ban shell. When you look at the ban shell, you can see that there is, looks like, needs repainting. Some of the supporting structure along there also were showing signs of the paint in order to be, I guess, probably gone through, cleaned up, and stained, or whatever the process is. It looks as if even up above on some of that could possibly use replacement of some boards. So, I know that's an investment in our city for quite some time now, and we all partake and enjoy that. City Band, Riverfront Rendezvous, among other things. Just looking at it, I was surprised to see the condition that it ended up in, and I think that should be attended to. You know, take a closer look at it, see just what it takes. We're better off keeping that in good order than spending a whole lot of money on redoing it or worse. Another thing that comes to mind, I've been driving under the railroad bridge on Church Street for many, many years. I look up above and I see the rust on those beams. We talk about infrastructure. I've been driving under that thing on a bike for over 50 years, not to mention that it looks like it needs some repair. I know there was some work that was done on that here about a year or so ago. I'm not sure just what they were doing, but, and I'm not sure if the railroad actually controls that. Although that being the case, it looks like it probably should get a good review and assessment and see what it takes to shore that up. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. And the Parks Director is here, so he's making note of that. I know we do evaluate the ban shell and all of our other facilities from time to time. And you are correct, the Church Street overpass is under the jurisdiction and owned by Canadian National Railroad, but I will pass along your information tomorrow morning.
Thanks.
With that, our speaker list is exhausted. We have one more? Oh, I don't... Hang on. Yeah, not item number three.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. So, our speaker list is exhausted, and we move on to item number five, and that is a presentation from Ariel Welling, who's one of the United Way co-chairs, Fred Hebbelwhite, in talking about the 2021 United Way campaign. Can I have you approach the lectern, please?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Ariel Welling. Like the mayor said, I'm one of the co-chairs of the 2021 campaign for the United Way. I expect that most of you know about or have heard of the United Way, but I'm just here today to talk to you about the services of the United Way and why I think you should support us. So, the 2021 group of drive chairs that I'm a part of is a group of business owners who are transferring the business from parent to child. They're a big group of us. And we're focused on success and succession, which is a great theme for the United Way because we're continually trying to improve upon what we have built. The United Way in Portage County is really very special compared to all United Ways in the United States. And across the country, the United Way is doing a really great thing throughout communities, supporting community members that need help in one way or another. But Portage County United Way is like at the top of the heap of all of them, making huge differences in lives of all the community members. We... Our focus is on educational, financial stability, education, financial stability, and health. And some organizations that you may know of that United Way supports and helps fund in the community are, there's a Learn for Life program that helps with third grade reading to make sure that students at the third grade level who are behind in reading can get caught up and continue to learn at the same level as their peers. It's a really important time of life for that. Financial stability, just in the past year, throughout the pandemic, the United Way was able to turn quickly, change what they were doing quickly, to provide financial rental assistance to people who didn't, who couldn't pay their rent sooner than any of the other governmental organizations had gotten there. So, they, you know, I hate to use the word pivot because it's really taken over the world. They really did pivot to make sure that community members in need and landlords who needed to be paid rent to be able to continue functioning as landlords got what they needed in that time before any of the other organizations could get there. Health, there's a current focus on mental health. That's the big push right now. They just released a new website to help direct people to mental health resources in this area. I expect that all of the city council members are aware of the Life Report, but many of the community members might not be. United Way puts out a Life Report every, how many years, Fred?
Every five years.
Five years, that finds out what the biggest needs are in our community so that they can direct the funding to those needs and, if need, develop programs to support that need. And in the most recent Life Report, it was found that mental health resources are one of the biggest needs in Portage County. So, there's so much that United Way does. There's support of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and CAP Services, and so many other things that I'm sure that all of you have heard of, not knowing that United Way is a big part in that. When I think of United Way as a whole and why it's important to me to support it, my best example is after a long, difficult conversation with friends where we start with one problem that needs to be solved, say, some misunderstanding between minority community and law enforcement. You start going into that and you find, oh, people need to know each other better. Oh, but there's also the historical problems that need to be overcome, and there needs to be better education and more resources so that people have what they need to feel safe. And it just grows and grows and grows and grows until one person or one group of people cannot even imagine beginning to make a dent in the problems that we have to face, that we need to fix to improve our community. And United Way is the place where I can go and say, I know that every dollar I am donating goes to support this incredible array of resources that help uplift all of our community members. Another thing that United Way supports is 2-1-1, a phone number that anyone in the community can call to help get directed to resources that they need. I personally have used it multiple times to help direct my employees to resources or friends to resources they need that I wasn't able to supply just as an employer or a friend. Just an incredible list of incredible resources that really, really improve our community. So, my call to action here is that I encourage all of you to know more about the United Way and what they do, the resources that exist in the community because of the United Way. Use them if you need them. Reach out for help for whatever it is that you may need. 2-1-1 is the great place to start. Call and say, I don't know where I can... Do whatever. I want to contribute to the community. How can I volunteer to support this goal? Or, I can't pay my rent. What do I do? Refer friends, refer acquaintances. Help people find the resources that they need by sending them towards the people who know what resources are available. And then, secondly, I really encourage all of you to contribute to the United Way. I believe for the city council members, there will be someone reaching out to you telling you how you can do that.
Yep.
I don't know what the process is within the city council, but someone will be in touch. And then, just for the community members that are here, individuals can make donations, but you could also talk to your employer. Many, many employers in the community have a program where they can automatically deduct from your paycheck so that you don't even have to think about it, and you can just set it on autopilot and know that you're supporting these really great resources. If your employer does not have that set up, encourage them to get in touch with us because we can help them do that. And if you want to donate as an individual one time or recurring, we can help you set that up. If the fact that the United Way supports all of these incredible community resources is not enough for you to want to donate, there are also fabulous prizes. So, one of the things that my coworkers always get really excited about is that everyone who donates over how much gets the coupon book?
$52.
$52 a year gets this incredible coupon book for local businesses that also support the United Way through coupons and through donations. There's so much fun stuff in there. So, even just going through that coupon book gives me a great opportunity to go and support organizations that are supporting the United Way and get to know new local businesses. So, that's one cool thing. There are lots of other cool prizes that you can win, too. So, look into it, and thank you very much for your time and consideration. Does anyone have any questions about United Way?
I think we're covered.
All right.
Thank you very much, Ariel and Fred, for coming in. And you are correct. All city employees will be getting information through my office on how to contribute. It is a payroll deduction. And all of the alders will get that through the clerk's office, which is also supported through payroll deduction. And as you said, many of the other businesses in town do something very similar. But if your employer doesn't, you can certainly reach out to the United Way directly. They have a website, and you could support some of those great programs. Thank you. Item number four is the consented, I'm sorry, item number six is on page four, and that is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Alder Morrow, is there a second?
Zarazua, I have a second.
Zarazua, seconds. Discussion?
I'd like to remove from the consent agenda for discussion the first mayoral appointment to the Portage County Water Quality Management Plan Advisory Committee.
Okay. And anything else? Okay, hearing none. All those approving of the consent agenda minus the mayoral appointment to the water quality, Portage County Water Quality Management Plan Advisory Committee, I'm sorry, vote yes, opposed vote no. Clerk will call the roll. Sorry, it's hard without the glasses on.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Now, Alder Keemer?
Yes, thank you. Given the five-year length of this appointment and that it spans more than one four-year election cycle, I would like to move that this motion be slightly amended by replacing the name of the office holder with the job title.
Okay, that makes sense, and that would actually happen because the statute requires that the appointee be an elected official. So, if, for example, I were to not be appointed or not be reelected, I would lose the ability to serve on that board, just like if you move out of the district, you're unable to serve as alderperson, or if I move out of the city, I can't be mayor, that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, by having the name on there, that only goes through the term. So, the appointee name has to be a person.
Sure.
The name has to be in there. So, what I'm saying is, the mayor's position next a year from April, if I am no longer the mayor, I'm no longer eligible to serve. And just like the other appointments that we have that go through council, it serves, if your term expires, you are no longer an alderperson, you are no longer the mayor. I don't think we have any other electeds.
Okay.
But when your term expires, you are no longer eligible to serve, and that vacancy must be replaced by someone else.
So, for example, for the alternative representative for Joel Lemke, if he gets an offer to work at another municipality?
That would never happen. But yes, you are correct.
It's a competitive job market.
Yes. If Joel was no longer an employee of the city,
Yeah, yeah.
His term would be over, and we would have to refill that with someone else.
And would another appointment be required, or would it just automatically go?
No, it would be another appointment.
Okay. So, by putting the title of the person in place, would that allow?
It doesn't because the appointee has to be a person, a name.
Okay. I guess then my only clarification then is I just wanted to clarify Director Lemke's role in this committee and confirm that he would be attending all the meetings and...
That is the intention. So, we talked with President Johnson about this. Joel is the most qualified by far of anybody on city staff
Yeah.
to attend that committee. But the statute says that it has to, the appointee
An elected.
has to be an elected person.
Sure.
The alternate can be anybody.
Sure.
So, in this case, I will be filling the elected role, but Joel will be the primary person attending all of the meetings,
Okay.
providing all the feedback, and giving council the updates.
Okay.
You still wish to make the motion?
If.
Because I have to defer to the city attorney
Yeah, I would defer to the city attorney as well.
I don't believe you can have the office holder. It has to be a name. The statute references the office or the elected portion, but, for example, in the Housing Task Force, the council president is the appointed person. We have to appoint, in this case, Melissa Johnson because she's the current council president.
I'm actually not familiar with the particular statute that this board is created under.
Okay. I think I put it in here, so hang on. I gotta find it. Unfortunately, I did not do that. I could bring it up for you, but I think that's going to take a little bit of time. The statute reads, and I'm paraphrasing a bit, but, "The primary or principal appointee must be an elected officer of the city. The alternate has no restriction."
Okay, because I do recall that, I don't, I've been trying to download her agenda for 10 minutes, but I do recall that Director Lemke is assigned as the alternate, so...
Yeah, because the principal is required to be elected. I didn't realize there was going to be an issue with this, so...
Quote 31.
Is it on there? Did I put the quote? No. No, that's what I had found before, but I didn't actually cite the statute. I can read it for you here shortly. Almost there.
Okay. So, this is straight out of the...
Correct. Here we go.
The local bylaws of the...
So, you have it up?
Oh, this is out of N.R. 12104.
"Principal representative of governing body, the governing body of each municipality to be represented on the advisory committee shall appoint, at its discretion, its chief elected official or representative elected by a majority vote of the governing body. Any appointed designee as the principal representative shall also be an elected official of the community." So, what Alder Keemer's asking is, can you say mayor, or does it have to be a name?
I think, yeah, I think it would need to be a name. And the reason being that, you know, if there were turnover, I think that somebody, one could reasonably argue that that person has not been appointed. You know, if it would just say "the chief elected official" or something along those lines, I think it would be different. But I think this would need to be the name of the person, and in the event that that person vacates the office that makes them eligible for it, we'd just have to deal with filling the vacancy.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I defer to the...
So, you're going to withdraw the motion then?
Sure, yep.
Okay, I would need a motion then to approve those appointments at some point.
I motion to approve the mayoral appointments to the Portage County Water Quality Management Plan Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll give the second to Dalton. Discussion? All those in favor, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And the clerk will call the roll. Did you see something, Alder Dalton?
I thought Alder Jennings raised their hand.
Oh, she did. I didn't see that initially. Alder Jennings?
Yes, I might be confused on this, but it's any elected official, so I guess I wanted, I was, I wanted to ask the mayor why you're appointing yourself if the statute doesn't say it must be the mayor.
I did it because in the statute, it said the chief elected official or someone else. Since no elected official is really going to very likely attend the meetings as the primary, talking with President Johnson, we both agreed that Joel should be the primary person, so I chose myself as the chief elected officer of the entire city. Okay, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous consent. That is approved. On page 46, you will find item number seven, and that's a resolution, a request from Cassie Burding, representing Northwest Journey for a sign variance to install a freestanding sign at the property at 2442 Sims Avenue with the parcel identified in your packet.
Alder Dalton, I'll make a motion to approve the sign variance
Thank you.
at 2442 Sims.
Alder Shore, seconds. Sorry, Alder Shore, I was looking at you because that's the second.
It is in my history.
He was waiting for you.
Any discussion? Paying extra attention to the screen now because without my glasses on, I can't see very well. I do, but if I, I don't, I keep forgetting to put the anti-fog solution on.
Oh, okay.
All right, all those, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is on page 47, and that's to award the fall, 2021 Fall Paving Project to American Asphalt of Wisconsin in an amount not to exceed $236,769.39.
Alder Morrow, so moved, please.
Motion by Morrow. Is there a second?
Leek, I'll second.
Seconded by Leek. Discussion there. Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number nine is on page 48 of your packet, and that's an ordinance amendment regarding section 9.02 as it relates to speed limits.
I'd like a motion to approve the ordinance amendments related to...
Thank you, Alder Dalton. Is there a second? Seconded by Shore. Discussion?
The purpose of this had to do with consistency on division?
Yes, on the very north end of division, it goes from 25 up to 35, then down to 15 for the roundabout. Taking out that 35 miles an hour allows a more transitional speed.
Okay, and there's no other part of the city that's going to affect?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 10 is on page 49 of your packet, and that's a resolution to update the public participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Funding. Alder, I'm sorry, Director Kornowski had spoken about that at committees. Does anybody have any questions, or can I get a motion?
Make a, make a motion to approve the updated pub, public, per, public, per, public participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Funding.
Thank you. Motion by Morrow, seconded by Keemer.
I'll second, yeah.
Discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Keemer, I mean, sorry, Niebon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 11 is on page 50 of your packet, and that's consideration of possible action on a resolution approving an amendment to the project plan of TIC, Tax Incremental District Number 5 for the city of Stevens Point. Dawn is available online, and Comptroller Treasurer Lattick is here if you have questions. Motion by Morrow?
Mo, so moved. We've already discussed this.
Second.
All good.
Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion? Alder Zarazua.
I'm just wondering on the resolution itself, the second whereas, is that, is there a typo there that it doesn't read correctly?
Okay. Director Kornowski or Comptroller Treasurer Lattick?
Page 50.
Okay. Second whereas, which word do you believe is a typo?
Well, it just doesn't read Tax Incremental, May 16, 2005.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it looks like it's missing Tax Incremental Finance District Number 5. So, District Number 5 was established on May 16, 2005 as a blooded area district.
Right.
So, we'll make that correction.
So, we will have just a... So we, we will have just a, an amendment to that, that will say tax incremental district five was created May sixteenth, two thousand and five as a blighted area district. Thanks, I was actually looking at whereas three apparently. Okay, so, um, we'll just make that amendment. We don't need a motion to do that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number twelve is on page eighty-seven of your packet, and that's consideration and possible action on modifying the method of funding sidewalk repairs and sidewalk continuation projects. We had, uh, Michael O'Meara wishing to speak. Mr. O'Meara, approach the lectern. Identify yourself, and you will have three minutes, sir.
My name is Michael O'Meara. I live at eighteen oh nine Clark Street in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I think that, uh, changing the, uh, funding of sidewalk replacements from, uh, a special assessment to being on the ad valorem tax rolls is good public policy, and for two reasons, and they're equity reasons. The first one is not everyone pays the assessment. If I am a business on, uh, Division Street or on Main Street, or if I live on Clark or Main Street, when those, uh, roads are resurfaced, they're being done as part of a federal or state funding deal, and the city may not, uh, levy assess, uh, special assessment for those projects because they're being paid by the state or the Fed. So, uh, the businesses who are on those streets and, uh, fat cats like myself, uh, don't, uh, have to pay for their replacement. The second one has to do with where we need sidewalk replacements, and we tend to need them in the older parts of the city where people are least apt to be able to afford the special assessment. And they also happen to be the areas where people need pedestrian access more than any place else. And so I think equity would say that we should pay for those. Otherwise, what, what, what will happen is you, uh, pass a ordinance of special assessment for a specific street, and you have all these people coming in, and they honestly say they can't afford it. And so you don't replace the, uh, so it's such a tough issue that you don't replace the sidewalks there, and they're tripping, and they're the group that you, that needs the access, the pedestrian access. And so for those two equity issues, I think that what is being provide, proposed is very good public policy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And with that, our speaker list is exhausted. I need a motion.
Zarazua, I would move to approve.
Zarazua, motions to approve. Is there a second?
Keimer, I'll second.
Seconded by Keimer. Further discussion? Alder Shore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I had had some concerns about this, uh, but I have actually, I've come around in, in my view and thought I would say just a few words about why. One is that, uh, we talk a lot about the burdens on staff, um, and, uh, you know, some of the dangers of adding to workload, um, especially since it's so, um, we face such challenges in the budget on, you know, adding more staff. And particularly in terms of, um, the repairs, I'm, I'm sure that must be, uh, a substantial burden to administer all of those special assessments, um, because it's, uh, you know, it's a large number every year. And so that's on the, on the repair side. Uh, and, and my initial impression about some of the, um, the larger property owners, um, was that, that equity would cut the other way, um, that this move would actually be , um, regressive rather than progressive in terms of tax burden, um, and with the help of the Comptroller Treasurer, um, looking at a recent case in my district, um, and then with, um, Michael O'Meara's additional points, uh, I now can see that, um, that the sort of comparisons on that, um, don't fall, uh, the way that I did, and so, um, I'm, I'm now inclined to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Morrow.
Um, from the last meeting that we had, my understanding is, okay, let's say we do in, that we do put this five cents onto the levy, it goes in, and it goes into the main fund. Um, year after year, city council can go, I think we need it for this road, I think we need it for, I think we need it for the bandshell, I think we need it for Toledo Pifner. So there's no guarantee that this money would be put into this, would be put into the sidewalks, which is what the folks would act, would act, would actually think that they were actually paying for. Um, is there a way to change that? Or would it just totally, as, as is now, just go into the levy fund, and each council could decide how they want to spend that extra ninety thousand dollars? Because I know each year that we always switch funds around for whatever our needs are, um, and you can't always project out what those needs are going to really be. And so we're, you know, Cory's always able to...
Yep, and I'll have the Comptroller Treasurer come up here and explain the...
Able to juggle the funds.
What could and, uh, could happen.
Sure, so I'd have to think through it a little bit more as far as how you could create a segregated fund, or, or just to ensure that basically i, if, you know, we're approving a specific adjustment to the tax levy at this point, obviously, we want to make sure that, uh, you know, future councils and future elected officials would follow that original intention, uh, as far as, you know, continuing to, to fund sidewalks in this manner and not reallocate those funds for other purposes. So I, I definitely, uh, understand what you're getting at, I just have to think through, you, you know, if, if we could, let's say, create a separate fund specifically for sidewalk repair, we, we could do that. Um, I mean, we can always create a new capital projects fund. Uh, the, you, you know, we try not to create more funds than, than are necessary, uh, just from a bookkeeping standpoint. Um, you know, the other, uh, thing that you could do is, you know, we could make it very clear in ordinance that if, if a council does not fund this in the capital budget, if the concern is that the repairs continue, we could look at some kind of language referencing, going back to special assessments if the, um, funds aren't in the capital budget, and actually, that could also create an incentive for the council to make sure that the funds are put into that capital budget, because otherwise, if, if you start sending out assessment letters again, and you start imposing assessments, when other, uh, when that practice had been discontinued, you know, I think you would definitely get some pushback, and that could create some political motivation, uh, to, you know, continue to put the proper funding in the capital budget.
But what you're saying is the city council could still choose to, like, put it somewhere else, because I know sidewalks aren't the most sexy thing. And we've talked about a new public works building, a new police garage, I mean, and that, and so there's, the, the, the list goes on and on and on, and we're always trying to find money for the other things that we want. And I know with what this is now, I don't think this would really fit that, um, because it, because we might want to fund it now, but years past, folks thinks that the, that they're getting paid for, and if that money goes somewhere else, folks, folks could go, folks could still get assessed, or, uh, or, or else not assessed, and they may not even get fixed.
Okay.
Is that how it, I mean, that's how it seems like it's going to work.
And, and I know it, it can be kind of tough to bind future councils to a specific app, action, especially because, I mean, future councils could make all kinds of changes. I could also talk it over with the city attorney a little bit to see sort of what we could, um, if he has any ideas on how we could address that concern.
So is this something, Cory, that you think we should wait till we have more information on then?
Well, one of the, the, the actions that we'll also have to do from here is, well, we, we also will have to update the ordinance as well. So, uh, and actually, we looked at that ordinance, and there's actually quite a few updates unrelated to sidewalks that, that need to be updated, so we looked at the relevant ordinance and then found that, oh, actually, there's a lot here that needs to be updated. So I think, you know, what the, the thought was is, you know, tonight, if we can at least get the policy direction on which way to go, if, if you're comfortable with that, then we can bring back, um, you know, some specific ordinance language as, as well, kind of implementing that change, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for the comptroller? Wait, hang on. Alder Bruce Keimer.
Sorry, I have another question for Comptroller Lattick. In the initial proposal that you put together for the finance packet, I believe there is some kind of language, um, suggesting that there could be like a gradual or transitional approach to, to this funding. I guess I was just curious how that, what that might look like, or how that might work.
Sure, so, and, and that's something that we are also looking for direction from the council on. So you could either make the change all at once, or you could spread it out over a number of years. So for instance, we anticipate an impact of about five cents to the city tax levy, five cents per thousand. So, you know, you could stretch it out over a period of five years, for instance, and then next year, you could say, we're going to special assess for only eighty percent of the sidewalk costs, and we're going to adjust the levy by a penny. And then the next year, okay, now sixty percent, and we're going to adjust it by another penny. So you could, uh, do it over five years, you could do a, a three-year phase out if you wanted to, um, but that is a policy decision. I think the big, you, you know, kind of concern that, that came up, that, that brought up that, that point of conversation is, uh, sort of the equity of, okay, you know, we have people who already were assessed for their twenty-twenty-one assessments, so do you, you know, phase it out, you know, make the change all in one year, or do you phase it out over multiple years to try to get a little bit more, um, equity between sort of how things are currently being done and, and how things would be done in the future?
Okay, so with that phasing, all households would be impacted, but gradually?
Y, y, yeah, so, so basically, you would still continue reduced assessments for a period of time as you phased it out, and then that would also, um, spread out the tax implications. I will say, looking at this from the perspective of the tax implications, so far, and this is very preliminary, so, uh, but it, it does look like, uh, the coming year, uh, should be fairly reasonable, a, a, as far as I, I think that, uh, just based on our initial indications, based on some of the things in the state budget, uh, that, you know, we don't expect a major increase at least, which, um, you know, future years, you never know.
Okay, thank you.
And when you say residentially, it would be all property tax paying entities?
Property, yes.
Again, as Alder Shore pointed out, not everybody pays property taxes. Uh, Alder Zarazua, then Alder Shore, then Alder Johnson.
This is still for...
Oh, still for Cory, okay.
Don't run away yet. Uh, so just a question, and I know it would take more time to evaluate, but if we do, did do a plan to phase it out, would that ultimately during that phase-out period be more staff time required?
Well, you know, I, I would say it would probably be, um, the same amount of staff time as the status quo. So because you still are sending out the notices, you, you still are, you know, doing the billing process, you still are figuring out, you know, who's sidewalk square belongs to who, uh, so you don't really realize the administrative savings until you phase it out completely.
I'm only wondering if there's more time spent, like, explaining to each taxpayer, like, why their bill is this percentage, like, that's what I would foresee happening.
Mm-hmm. There could be some, depending on, you know, how much detail you give them and, and how you explain the, the calculation, um, so it's, it's possible. So, but it, it is, you know, I'd say there's pros and cons as far as eliminating it completely for twenty-twenty-two versus, uh, a, a longer phase-out period, so.
Thank you.
Alder Shore.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just on the issue of future councils, um, I feel better about that, um, now than I might have a little earlier, because, uh, now we have this scoring system, um, that should be very helpful in, uh, for, for the sidewalk continuation, in directing towards the places where it's needed most. And the point with regard to future councils is that, um, more rapidly, because we have that, we will be getting, you know, in the coming years through a lot of the priorities, a lot of the places where the need for continuation is most.
Thank you. And President Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for the discussion. I, I think in general, the policy discussion tonight is really, do we switch the way we do this? That's the main question. All of these other things are related without question, um, but they're separate policy questions that we can decide. As it relates to trying to create a segregated fund, number one, um, you know, Wisconsin landfills pay into a segregated fund to the state to the tune of about seventy-eight million dollars a year, some of it's supposed to go to recycling, um, and it's dedicated towards that, and unfortunately, not all of it goes to it because the legislature has the latitude to spend the money as it sees fit to meet the needs. So in a similar way, um, this council and future council, that, that's their job, is, is to do the budget work and evaluate it and meet the needs. Um, you know, this council also approved an amazing, um, sustainable, um, capital plan at the advice of our comptroller treasurer who created it. We approved it. Um, future councils could go, you know what? We don't care, we're going to blow it out of water. So worrying about what future councils are going to do is, of course, worthy of worry, but, um, we, we can't control that. We have to do what we think is right for now, um, and, and the policy question that before us is, do we switch the way we fund these things? And that's the question we should be answering. I do support this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I think I got everybody. Alder Zarazua, you've already spoken twice.
Did I say twice?
Uh, yes, and so has Alder Shore. If it's brief, go ahead.
I just want to say that now that it's been pointed out that this is a regressive tax, I think that makes it more critical that we are looking at how we can remedy that.
Thank you. Okay, if you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Wait, wait, wait. Alder Niebone.
You, uh, I...
Sorry, I didn't, didn't see you waving earlier.
Um, the one concern I had, and this probably is a policy question that President Johnson raised, is if, if a, a nonprofit needs a sidewalk, will they get assessed separately because they don't pay the property taxes? I know they do now, so I'd like to see that. The one comment I received from a constituent is someone who, like me, is on a fixed income, and felt that it would be so much harder to come up with the, uh, assessment than it would be for the property tax, the small property tax increase. So she was supportive of the change, and, um, from my perspective, it, it's easier for me to bear a nickel on a thousand than come up with maybe three or four thousand to put in a sidewalk on my yard. So I support this as well, a, as well as the one constituent that, that did reach out. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Alder Bruce Niebone. Just to be clear, um, that is not part of the motion, so businesses, nonprofits that currently do not pay property taxes would not be assessed special for their sidewalks. If you want to make a motion to that, you certainly could.
Would that not be part of the ordinance change? Would that not be part of the ordinance change?
You could direct staff to make that ordinance change, but it is not part of the current motion.
If, well, we're just basically approving the concept tonight, correct?
Uh, you, you are approving the method of funding, which would be tax assessment, not special assessment. If you are looking for, let's say, the Church of Mike that currently owns property and does not pay taxes, this, voting yes on this, would not allow that to happen, what you want. It would not be special assessed to the Church of Mike, it would only be on the property tax paying entities.
So that could be a little bit, well, I don't know how many nonprofit entities there are that don't have sidewalks around them now, but if we're talking about equity, that, that's, that's not fair. Uh, does that bear a little more discussion from other folks? Or could that be addressed in the ordinance, I guess?
You could certainly address it in the ordinance, but it is not directive at this point.
Well, i- if that can be included somehow in an ordinance, I'm fine with the, with just making the change the way it is, the motion the way it's made.
Okay.
I'd like to, just want to verify.
Alder Morrow.
I just wanted to verify something. So we are voting right now to, to change the way that we do, change that we do sidewalks, and to assess five cents per one thousand dollars for everybody in the city in this motion.
No. What you are directing is the policy that will put sidewalk continuation and sidewalk repairs on the tax levy, at an amount to be determined at some point in the future.
But around five cents?
Generally speaking, the current plan that we've been executing would cost about five cents per thousand
Okay.
Uh, on your taxes. But that, that is not set in ordinance or policy or anything.
Okay.
Okay, all those, uh, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
No.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
There's a hand raised.
Yes, and I saw that, that person came late, and we did not have anyone signed up to speak on this agenda item.
Oh, aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sarah Zua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number thirteen is on page ninety, and that is consideration and possible action on a proposal for a forward, forward appraisal for completing a citywide revaluation of assessed property values. Need a motion? All motion by Keemer.
Yes.
I second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Sarah Zua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Sloinski.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved, our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at seven fifty-three. Thank you.